Hello, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for October 1st of 2019. And first on our agenda... Looks like we're looking at signs again.
We do have minutes for you from your September 17th.
Oh, sorry.
Meeting that we need to have the members look at.
Move to approve?
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our public hearing item for this afternoon is a continuation of a hearing from the September 17th meeting, and we have been discussing for a good part of the summer signs, and specifically signs in the... That may or may not be located within the public right-of-way. So John, if you could go to our text, please. We are... We have a text amendment. It was continued at your last meeting to today's meeting, and primarily, we have an item attached to your report that is a summary of our findings as it relates to OCCK bus stop information. And we determined with their help that they have a total of 178 bus stops, and of those 178, 61 are in residential districts. They're located within residential areas. Presently, they have advertising signs at 15 locations throughout the community, and we determine that two of those are bus stops located within residential areas. So the purpose of this text amendment is to go through and to set out the exceptions to the general rule that you can't place signs in the public right-of-way along our city streets. And so the first exception there deals with signs that are placed by a governmental entity for public health, safety, and welfare, and those could be traffic and wayfinding signs, emergency signs, signs showing the location of public facilities, and signs that are required to be placed by a governmental agency in carrying out any responsibilities that it has. So that you're driving along, you've got railroad crossing signs, you have speed limit signs, no parking signs, stop signs, yield signs, signs that direct you to the emergency room, those types of things. Those are signs that in this code are specifically carved out that you may place in the public right-of-way. And if you want to keep going, John, there's two types of signs that we allow only in the C4 Central Business District. And then those are signs that project out over the public right-of-way. The sign for the Stiefel Theater, their marquee sign there would be a classic example of a projecting sign that projects out over the public sidewalk, and that's because you've got all the buildings in the downtown area that are... The front of the building is right on the right-of-way line, and so almost any type of sign that they have is going to project out over the public right-of-way. The other exception is downtown businesses can have A-frame or sandwich board signs that they place out on the public sidewalk in front of their business. Exception number four there is for if you've driven around the community, various subdivisions will place an entry sign. Sometimes they'll put an island in the middle of a entry street, and they'll place a sign in that island that tells the public what the name of that subdivision is, and those have generally been approved through a license agreement with the City of Salina that spells out the size, whether it's lighted or not, design materials to be used. So the purpose of that would be a subdivision entry sign. Also, the neighborhood entry signs would also address signs that might be placed to tell people they're entering the Santa Fe Historic District or the 8th Street Highland Historic District. So those would be considered neighborhood entry signs. The exceptions five and six there, if you've driven in the vicinity of Kansas Wesleyan, they've attached some colorful banners to the utility poles along there. The North Salina Community Development is trying to develop a program for placing banners on utility poles along North 9th Street. And so this exception would allow staff to develop a banner program that would be essentially administered by the city to approve or disapprove those banners, which would be in the public right-of-way. The Downtown Group is interested in being able to have decorative flags that might be on the sidewalk or attached to the decorative light poles downtown. So exception six deals with that. Exception seven, you discussed at your last meeting and made a recommendation, and so exception seven there says that during election season, it is acceptable to have temporary signs out in the unpaved right-of-way in any zoning district. And so that is addressed in Section 42-508 that you dealt with at your last meeting. And then I think we have one more, John. And this is the one that we wanted to focus on, why we provided you the additional information about OCCK signs. This deals with advertising signs on bus benches and bus shelters. And when we originally proposed it, we used the same zoning districts that we allowed for the larger temporary signs and for commercial speech signs that were temporary in nature, and we were going to limit the signs to those districts. But it appears that you can see from the information that 61 locations out of the 178 bus stops are located in residential areas. And if we had adopted the language there in the section that would limit it just to those districts, we would be putting a lot of locations, making them ineligible for OCCK to have those. It would also require us to have a map and to keep it up to date. So the... We have provided you with optional language in the draft, and one option is to limit it primarily to commercial and industrial areas. The other option, option two there, is basically would be the same as with the election season signs. You would be saying that it's okay to have advertising signs on bus benches and bus shelters, regardless of what zoning district those bus stops were located in. So that would be our primary discussion point and why this was continued to today's meeting so that you could make an informed decision as to what impacts would be based on those two choices. So option one would limit OCCK and require us to work with them to make sure we inform them of what bus stops were eligible to have signage. And under option two, you would basically be saying that there's 178 bus stops along routes within the city, and in your mind, there's no reason to distinguish between the two. So we'd be open to any questions you have about this draft text amendment. We have Aaron Martin from Clark Meislinville, who worked closely with staff to develop this final public hearing draft for your consideration. So if you have any legal questions or about legal basis for doing this, Aaron could address those questions.
Are there any signs on the bus stops in our one right now?
Yes, there's two right now. Those are located in front of the Salvation Army and near the Martin Luther King Jr. Development Center on Santa Fe. Both of those signs are currently in entirely residential zoning districts.
Are they making any requests of us? Do they have a suggestion?
Well, the sense that we got was that there... If they had their goals met, they would be able to have an advertising on every... Their goals are twofold. They, as you can see, they only have... They don't... We don't know, I don't think, Dustin, do we know how many benches they have at the 178 bus stops?
Not currently.
Okay. So it would be their goal that 178 bus stops have at least a bench, and if ideally, a bench and a shelter. And so in their... I think their thinking is that they would like to be able to have signs on every one of the bus benches that they install, regardless of the zoning district. And we weren't... That's why those options were presented for you today, because there... In previous discussions, there was some sense or some discussion about limiting the advertising signs to benches located in commercial or industrial areas, but we wanted to present to you the information so that you could see that potentially, if you do that, it would limit or rule out a large number of locations from being able to have... Not from being able to have benches, but being able to have advertising associated with those benches. So it is purely a policy decision, discretionary decision for the Planning Commission as to what you think is best for the community and what you think is best for OCCK.
Do we know of the 15 that they currently have? Are they on benches or stops, or a combination of the both?
I'm not aware of any signs that they have on the shelter structures. All of the signs that they currently have are mounted on bus benches. This, it is not unusual in other communities to have signs on shelters as well as benches. I think they have fewer shelters than they have benches, but as drafted, this would allow for signs to be placed either on a shelter or a bench. But right now, according to their records, they have 15 stops of the number that they have that have benches and that have advertising on those benches. What I... Number I don't think we have for you is how many of the 178 stops have benches, but we do know that they have 15 benches in the community that already have signs on them, and two of those are in residential areas. So I guess the options would be if you chose to limit it or exclude residential areas, then I suppose that we would have to work with them at some point to get those two eliminated. If you decide that it's appropriate for advertising to be placed on benches regardless of where they're located, then it makes all of their 178 stops potentially eligible.
Do we have any pictures as an example of what it looks like now?
Yes.
With those benches?
John, we have... We have a couple of those, don't we?
And has there been any questions or comments from the public in any zoning area?
There have been a few questions from the public, and there's been a few questions from city commissioners about who are new commissioners that weren't involved with the original discussions with OCCK.
Were they negative, or...?
No, they were... They just weren't understanding... Their general understanding was that signs were not permitted in the public right-of-way, and they wanted to know how they got there, under what basis. And what we're trying to do is establish a legal basis through the city code to say that this type of signage is appropriate in... Within the right-of-way in the community, and the primary policy question for you is this bench right now is next to... This is by Cloudon, Ohio, and the abutting zoning for this is commercial. And there's 15 of these around the community, and 13 are in commercial areas, two are in residential areas. And the primary policy question for you is whether the ability to do this should be excluded from areas that are solidly residential.
Just to start the discussion, I'm generally against signs that are unnecessary in residential It just seems like we're bombarded with ads everywhere we go, and home ought to be somewhat sacrosanct.
Yeah, so this would be considered a governmental-type sign that would be allowed because it's part of their system. This is more discretionary, and so the exception number nine there would be for allowing advertising signs on CityGo bus benches or bus shelters, if they had a more formal shelter. But this... The question would be if this was in a area of the community, if it was on Marymount Road between Iron and Crawford, which is solidly residential, and there was a bus stop on Marymount, is this... Is that an acceptable location for that?
Another question might be, how important is that income to OCCK? I very much support the buses. Would it make a difference, a significant difference in their success?
Well, obviously, if they could expand it from 15 to all 178, that would probably be a significant contribution. We're not familiar with the ins and outs of their details. What we know is their current agreement with the city is that... I think there was a question about can a business or an entity or whatever, can they... Are they sponsoring this bus stop? Are they going out and getting businesses to sponsor the stop or the shelter or the pattern? The answer to that is no. And the revenue that they derive from the placement of those signs would not cover the cost of creating a shelter or a bench. Their agreement is that they will use any money that they get from that to go towards their operating expenses. So I think what they stated at the last meeting was that they... Their goal is to get benches or benches and shelters at every one of their stops, and it follows from that, that if they had the option of having signage at each of those stops with benches, from a financial support standpoint, that would probably be the ideal situation for them. But that's not the sole consideration, and that's why we have provided the commission with two options.
I feel that if the advertising dollars were spent on benches and shelters, that would justify placing them in residential areas. But if it's just going to go to pay salaries, I don't feel good about it.
Now, am I reading this correctly in that there's still an agreement and the city has to approve the signage, right?
Right. And we've had some discussions with Mr. Martin about strengthening, kind of modifying the criteria that the city uses. We're not issuing permits for these necessarily, but the agreement between the City of Salina and CityGo, which is up for renewal, would have the specifications as far as sign size and those types of things. What it says on this flyer is that their ads are available for purchase with a six-month contract for $300 or a 12-month contract for $500, and then they have some criteria, and Mr. Martin would like to work with the city and CityGo to kind of strengthen that criteria to make sure it's legally defensible and is content-neutral as possible. But I think it's contained within your packet, and it says that the... They have the exclusive right to sell advertising and sponsor rights at fixed route bus stops in accordance with a written advertising sponsorship plan approved by the governing body, and if advertising on sponsorship revenues are used to fund fixed route and paratransit operating expenses. So the idea is that they're not doing this to try to have revenue from the bus advertise... Bus bench advertising to pay for benches and shelters, but rather to defray the costs of their operating expenses. So that is... And you, as planning commissioners, may not agree with that, but that's what the agreement is between OCCK and the city currently, is that theirs to use their revenues derived from that to help fund their operating expenses.
I think for that reason, I would go with option one. That's my feelings.
I think my main concern is these are only on benches, right? They can't just go up and put up a sign at a stop that doesn't have a bench or a shelter just because...
Right. They're not going to put up a temporary sign or small pole sign or put a stick in the ground. These are signs that are affixed to... So it says, "Signs placed..." Were actually signs authorized by the city to be permanently affixed on benches and shelters and other public transportation facilities located in the public right-of-way. And option one limits that to our university, hospital, medical, and commercial industrial districts, and also places where there's assisted living facilities or nursing homes. Option two says that they are limited to... Or they're allowed in any zoning district. And so these are signs that are permanently affixed to the bench or to the shelter and not just stuck in the ground because there's a bus stop. So that is... What you see here is what we're trying to address through a sign code amendment that essentially establishes a legal status for these signs. As we have an agreement between the city and OCCK, but it's not backed up by what we have in our sign code. And so we're trying to provide some backing for that, support for that in the sign code, and the primary decision is not... We're not trying to allow for signs, any type of sign, to be stuck in the ground at a bus stop. The idea is that these are affixed to benches and shelters, and if we had a similar situation that you saw in that photograph, and it was in an area that was predominantly residential as far as zoning and use, the question is whether that is what you want to support and see, or whether you want to limit the locations to commercial and industrial areas.
So is that the only thing we're voting on today?
No, you're voting on the entire thing. It's... This is the draft that's before you is what you're voting on, and your options are to approve it as drafted and presented, or to make deletions or revisions or additions to it, or to postpone consideration to a future meeting to have revisions made that you'd like to see, or you could recommend that nothing be changed in our current sign code. The only thing where we wanted to provide an option for commissioners to choose is we didn't feel like we gave you enough information about the potential impact of your decision on OCCK's operations, so we broke down the information for you so that you could see that there are 178 locations, and we have a number of them that are in residential areas.
Is there a number requirement? I mean, can they have more than one sign per location?
Well, that's going to be addressed in the updated guidelines in the agreement between OCCK and the city, and that's where Mr. Martin hopes to get involved. And so what you see is it's in your packets, and it's labeled as OCCK Bus Stop Advertising Plan. And in your packets is this current advertising plan, and this is up for renewal this fall. And we think that this is going to be modified with some of the criteria, but we're trying to get an idea of the Planning Commission's recommendation as to location, but the size, the number, it's never anticipated that there's going to be more than one sign at a location. Our primary focus was, we wanted to let you know that they have a lot of bus stops that are in residential areas, and they have two locations that are in residential areas now that already have these signs. So we wanted to be able, for the Planning Commission, to be aware that how your recommendation, whichever it is, would potentially impact OCCK.
For the board's discussion, it looks to me, if we assume there are 100 benches that bring in $500 a year, that's $50,000. Is that going to be material to the success of the... I don't know what percentage of their budget that represents. I have no idea. But it seems to me if it's not going to be materially important, we'd err on the side of leaving them off in the residential areas.
I'm struggling with that as well.
Yeah.
Like the idea of it being like, for instance, I had one across the street from my house that green colors and, you know, pretty... It's unobtrusive, it's not very offensive.
Yeah.
But you start throwing advertising on it, and the answer would be, do I want to look at that? No, I don't.
Right.
I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood.
Yeah. And in general, I think it... There's... Commercialization in a housing area is not ideal in any way. So if there were a desperate situation, I might think differently because the buses do serve the community. The question is... The question is...
They're already being allowed an exception advertising in that right-of-way already. So, to me, it's like we're already kind of meeting them halfway.
Yeah.
Or am I looking at that appropriately?
What do you think?
I agree with you.
Yeah?
I wouldn't want to look at it either.
Uh-uh.
I'm ready to vote, but we've got a public hearing. We need to hear from the public.
Oh.
Any members from the public that'd like to speak? Okay, thanks.
Then are we ready for a motion?
We are.
Well, I, I, I think I'm not as, they're a nonprofit, aren't they? Are not-for-profit?
Yes, they're, I mean, they are, they receive and then as part of the discussions every year on the budget, they, they receive a, a budget allocation from the city to help support their operations. So, I can't, I can't speak to, they're not completely self-supporting, but I, I can't. I don't know if that's relevant or not. You happen to know the answer to that?
It's just for me, just thinking that I, that income, I think, would be very important.
I, I, Aaron Martin, city attorney. I, I do not, haven't independently confirmed the status, but I believe that OCCK Inc. is a Kansas not-for-profit corporation. As Mr. Andrew mentioned, there is a separate agreement that provides funding from the city to OCCK every year. Historically, that is how it has been funded, in part by the City of Salina. And that amount is always subject to the city commission's approval. And also, as Mr. Andrew mentioned, that agreement will be out for renewal imminently in the very near future, in the next month or so. So, that will be before the city commission and funding issues will be decided by the city commission.
Does the city commission look at their financial statement?
I don't, I don't know what informa, there, the city commission meets with all the various not-for-profit organizations or local organizations that request city funding and they're supposed to provide information on their, their financials and their financial need to justify their request for city support. But I'm not, I'm not aware, there's obviously the allocation that the city commission ultimately decides on is gonna be based on OCC's request as well as documentation that OCCK has provided to justify their request.
This might be a question for Mr. Martin. In option two, when it says specify, and shall specify the allowable message content, and then I see in the agreement, it talks about how the signage cannot be used to promote political, religious, personal, alcohol, tobacco, bias, slanderous, discreme. And, and then with the recent discussions we've had on content neutral and, I mean, so can we say that they cannot have these items on the signs?
Yes. The case law that, that speaks to signs in this type of context allows the city to create a, what's called a limited public forum. And that is where we allow some speech, but not all speech. And we can distinguish between allowed and disallowed speech so long as the regulations are reasonable and viewpoint neutral is what the case law says. So, reasonable is gonna be, depend on a number of factors, but what ultimately, what is, what is the basis for allowing this and not allowing it? Is it traffic safety? Is it residential views? Any, anything that is deemed reasonable by, by the city commission that approves that agreement? And viewpoint neutral, of course, means we're not taking sides based on the message expressed. For, if we're allowing some political views but not others, that would not be viewpoint neutral. I think when we talk about in the text amendment, the allowable message content, that is what we're getting at. We're not talking about only advertising this brand, but more broadly, as you identified, probably, probably prohibiting certain types of messages that get into the non-commercial speech category. So, preserving that, but just being a little bit more particular and establishing some more safeguards to make sure that when messages are approved or disapproved, the basis for doing that is legally supported and ultimately reasonable and viewpoint neutral. So, I don't, I don't want to suggest that the ultimate rules will be a whole lot different. We haven't really gotten that far to know exactly what we're gonna propose for the new rules for what's allowed and what's not allowed. But it's very possible that they will change and that those will be the legal parameters that we're looking at and reasonableness and viewpoint neutrality.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I think the signs we've seen are tasteful and last time OCCK representatives said that they do approve or they look at the signs first before they approve them. So, I'd lean towards option two, just...
Could we allow them to put in residential areas brass plates on there saying, "This is donated by a company," which gives them a little advertising, but doesn't, I mean, and maybe they could work out somewhere where that company could fund that.
Sponsor it more or less.
Sponsor that deal and it would not be so distasteful. A swat, smaller brass plaque, but it'd still give them the opportunity to have some income from that initially. One, maybe a one-time thing or part of the cost of them installing it would benefit them and not be quite so distasteful.
Is that, I don't think that's addressed in this though, is it?
It would not be addressed in the text amendment. It would have to be something that was addressed in the agreement and the criteria between, because this is referring primarily to, to signs that we wouldn't, if somebody put a plaque on a building and said, "This building funded by a gift from XYZ philanthropist," we wouldn't require a sign permit for that. It would be, a plaque like that would be exempt from the sign code because of its size, but it would certainly make this a lot more complicated to administer and, and the, the idea is that this, there's going to be a written agreement and that written agreement is going to specify the allowable message content, the size, the placement, what design materials. We're not trying to address that through the code. What we're trying to address today is, the first question is, should signs be allowed to be affixed to bus benches and bus shelters in the right-of-way at all? Or should there be no exception for that? And if there is an exception to allow signs to be affixed to bus benches and shelters, should they be limited to specific zoning districts or be allowed in any zoning district? That's, that's, there could be some of you who don't think they should be allowed at all and that's, that's a valid position to take. The real, if you all agree that they should be allowed, then the primary question is, should they be limited to specific zoning districts or allowed in any zoning district?
It's, so it's kind of a compromise if we say, "Keep it out of residential zones." They get some income.
No, so I'm...
But there is, it's not a, it's not a city subsidized bus system then. I always assumed it might be. It's, it's a quasi-private, is that right?
No, it, it is not, it's not a city operated, it's operated by OCCK, but there is an allocation made from the city budget each year to subsidize...
Yeah.
...or contribute towards their operating costs. That contribution is done through a written agreement that is renewed periodically. It's up for renewal this fall.
Yeah.
And I'm not privy to what that contribution might be. I don't think the city commission has voted on or decided that yet, but City Go bus system is not self-sustaining. It is subsidized transportation through federal grants, through city support. And so, the bus bench advertising is just one element of that that helps them with their operating expenses. So, if you think that's, that's desirable and for the public good, then you should support this amendment that authorizes them through the sign code. And then the real question is, do you want to limit them to specific zoning districts only or to any bus bench location in the community?
Are we ready for a motion?
I didn't hear you, Joan.
I asked if we were ready for a motion.
I am.
Yeah.
I move that we allow signs on bus benches, but not in residential districts.
I would second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor, vote aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, this, what we are trying to do here is that the, the city commission will be privy to your recommendation on this and we're, we're trying to get this to line up with the consideration of the renewal of their agreement so they can, city commission can know what your recommendations are relating to these advertising signs. So, we appreciate your time and consideration of that and you all had good questions. We have no administrative items for you or preliminary discussion items under unfinished or other business. We have not been able to get in contact with Mr. Olson to determine whether he is able and willing to serve as the planning commission's representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we will try to get confirmation of that from him. And if he is not able or willing, then we'll have to bring that back to you for that. The other thing we would note is that we will be meeting on the 15th of October. And Mr. Bill Shepherd had, and his partners have withdrawn their application to create a planned development district for his housing area, but he is moving forward with his replat of that area in terms of adjusting the lots. So, we will, we will still hold the continued hearing on that, but we will simply report to you that the planned development district has been withdrawn and the plat will be on for your consideration. We're also planning to do the annual landscape awards as part of that. And related to that is, at Monday's city commission meeting, the 7th, we are looking for a volunteer from the planning commission who might be willing to present a proclamation to the city commission proclaiming October is Community Planning Month in Salina. And we've had planning commissioners do that in the past. I think Mr. Freiberger's done it a couple times.
I am my grandparent.
He's not here to, to...
They drop.
...ask, but I was, I was going to reach out to him or it's good to see if they would be willing to be present on Monday to read that proclamation, which we have all prepared. It's just a matter of presenting that. But we always try to look for a planning commission volunteer to do that. And our primary community planning month activity is the annual landscaping recognition awards, but...
Greg, do you read that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. We will, we will send that to you. Remind, the good news is it's right at the beginning of the meeting, so you don't...
Outstanding.
That's crazy.
Thank you.
It's, it's the first item on the commission agenda, but we have a proclamation all prepared and we can send that to you and it's just a matter of presenting that at the podium there to the city commission. And then the city commission always asks what activities, if any, are planned for the month. And I'll, I'll have a list of a couple of those for you to inform them. Part of their proclamation is expressing their recognition and for the volunteers who agree to sit on all the city's planning boards, which includes this, Board of Zoning Appeals, Heritage Commission, Design Review Board. So, part of it is, gives the city commission an opportunity to express their appreciation for you all who volunteer your time, so. And that will be next, Monday, the 7th meeting. And there, like I said, we will meet on the 15th and we already have items scheduled for November 5th. So, looks like we'll be continuing to meet regularly and we'll get our packets out to you for the 15th. And what I have down as of now for our program is we have Foley Equipment and their landscaping for an award. We have the yoga studio on Walnut, which that was voluntary landscaping. And then we have Credit Union of America, which is on South Ohio as in the curb appeal category. So, if there's, there's any others, I mean, we, we do this every year and so we try to, the newer projects, we try to wait to see how the maintenance and everything holds up. So, things like Exchange Bank and those, they may be there for the future, but we try to at least get through a growing season and see how things hold up. So, we've got others on our list, but those are the three that we have for this year. And if you've, any of you feel strongly about any other ones and want to communicate that to us, please do so. But it takes us a little bit of preparation to get our, identify the right people and get plaques and all of those things made. So, we're planning to do that on your meeting, the 15th.
Does the city engineer approve the drainage plans?
City engineer reviews drainage studies and drainage plans for those projects that are subject to our draining, drainage standards. Not every project that's done in Salina has a drainage plan.
Okay. Well, I got some comments on the golf course that I brought up at the last meeting regarding the Shepherd Development, that water running through the course may not be the best option. And I'd like to review those drainage plans.
Okay. Those drainage plans were approved by the city engineer, by the golf course and Parks and Recreation and by the city commission. So, the city golf course granted cornerstone development easements across the golf course for drainage.
I understand the golf course was represented by the golf pro and not necessarily by the golf course superintendent.
The golf course was represented by the Director of Parks and Recreation, which is the department that oversees the golf course.
Who's not a golfer. And there's some concern that the extra drainage off of that development will cause problems on the course. It traverses three fairways and there's already...
Is someone associated with the golf course going to share that information with us? Because we've had the plans reviewed by the Director of Parks and Recreation.
I don't think so. These are comments from golfers.
From golfers themselves, not, not from the operators of the golf course. Okay. Well, any, any golfers are free to attend the public hearing on the 15th and provide any information that they have, but the, all of that was reviewed when the... information that they have, but the, all of that was reviewed when the Grand Prairie was originally proposed, and the drainage plan for that involved some of the runoff going across the golf course and over to the detention basin that serves the Mariposa subdivision, and that was by design.
I'm just reporting what I heard from the public.
Okay. So we can, we have, we have all that information, so we can put the grading and drainage plans that were approved in 2008 in the packet for you. But I'm pretty sure that the City Commission would not have authorized drainage easements across the golf course to be dedicated if there was any thought that those drainage easements were somehow detrimental to the operation of the golf course. At one time, the golf course was trying to create a detention pond on the golf course on the 12th fairway, and it was eventually determined that the pond was going to be in a landing area that was going to be too frequently landed in, so they went away from having a pond located on the golf course. But there is water that goes across the golf course from east to west and ends up in the Mariposa Detention Pond that is west of the 16th fairway.
Of course, this is a very wet year, but there's been drainage problems at the course without any runoff from a new development.
Right. Okay, so we will provide that drainage plan.
Any other business, or anybody from the public that wants to speak, or?
Joan Ratslove, Salina. Really appreciate the opportunity. Commissioner Jackson made a comment last, I think it was last week, during the discussion about, I think it was in the study session perhaps, about long-range planning. And Mr. Andrews said, "Well, we don't have funding for staff to carry that out." And I thought, well, that was interesting information, and to me, it seems like that would be important to have. And it occurred to me that Public Works is requesting new staff for enforcement and outreach for solid waste. And that I thought that our city has made a lot of approvals of things that I would not consider sustainable development. And we've seen some really nice plans, I thought, for internal development, one being on Broadway, for instance. I personally really like that. But we are annexing and funding infrastructure so that we're adding to our footprint. And so it occurred to me that if we had a position that was more connected with planning and community development, that that could be a sustainability-type position that could include the function that they're wanting to do for solid waste. So I wanted to mention that to you guys, and if I'd had time, I would have sent you an email. And I want to also let people know that, you know, coming to a meeting is not the only way to communicate with board members. You can email and you can call. So that may be easier for some people. And if I'd had time, I would have sent an email earlier, and I wouldn't have to be here. But I wanted to present that idea to you, and hopefully, maybe you guys can come up with something and get it on your agenda. And, you know, because I really feel like we need a focus on sustainability and long-term planning that we don't have currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, is that under our purview to request positions?
Well, you can certainly, in your goal setting or anything, if you think that more priority should be given to long-range planning than current planning, that is something, you don't really have any budgetary authority because you don't have a budget, but you can, you are, if you don't think that enough priority is given to long-range planning, that's something that you can communicate with the City Commission or as part of your goals that you're communicating. What we were explaining is that some communities, including some communities, Salina's size have, take for example, the City of Manhattan has a current planning division and a long-range planning division, and they are different divisions with different focuses. Our staff doesn't have any long-range planning division because the way that we are staffed, we have to focus most of our attention and time on current planning, current development, and we don't spend as much time as we could or we would even like on long-range planning. But in terms of priorities or steady sessions or communicating to the City Commission in terms of priorities, if you believe that more attention should be given to long-range planning, then that's something that you can communicate to the City Commission as an important goal that you think should be achieved from a planning perspective. But it's the City Commission working with city management that sets the budgets for the various departments. And so I'm not familiar with that new position in Public Works, nor am I familiar with whether it's actually going to be created and funded or not. But there is a difference between requesting positions and actually creating them. So not every department that requests the creation of an additional position or positions necessarily has those approved for funding by the City Commission, so.
But that division is self-supporting, too. So if they have it in their budget...
Right. Every, different departments are funded differently, and we've been having a lot of discussions about that. And so we have a general operating fund, so it's not, most departments in the City of Salina are not self-supporting departments. They are supported by the city's general fund. And so that includes our department. So when the city's general fund is doing well, there's more funds available for things. And when the city's general fund is not doing as well, then there's less funds available for certain activities. And so we have to live within our means.
I understand. Any other business?
We have nothing else to bring to the Commission other than tell you we'll see you on the 15th, and we'll be reminding you about the proclamation on the 7th.
All right. Motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
Motion's been seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I guess I need to gavel.